Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to this Wednesday, July 2, 2025, regular meeting of council. Happy Canada Day, everyone. I will call the meeting to order at 9:00 a.m. sharp, and I'll ask everyone to stand for the singing of our national anthem, please. Well, that was a new "Oh, Canada." It's going to take us a little while to get used to learn how to sing along with that one. I like it. I like the change, but yeah, I wasn't quite sure where my cue was. So good singing along, everyone. Okay, well, good morning. Welcome again, everyone. Are there any additions to the agenda this morning?
Good morning, Madam Mayor and Council. Yes, we do have an addition of closed session under current privacy legislation, Section 24, proposing to do that as 12.1 and then move adjournment to 13.
Okay, so 12.1. 12.1 will be a closed session under FOIP Section 24. Okay, perfect. Thank you very much for that. Is there a member of council that would like to approve the agenda for the July 2, 2025 regular meeting of council minutes with the addition of the closed section, FOIP 24? Counselor Gomana, thank you very much. All in favor? That is carried. Is there a member of council that would like to approve the minutes for the June 18, 2025 regular meeting of council minutes? Counselor Evans, thank you very much. All in favor? That is carried. We have no proclamations this morning. We do have one public hearing, which is 5.1. This is a nonstatutory public hearing for commercial and industrial property tax incentive bylaw 2025-03D. I am the mayor of Drayton Valley, and I declare the public hearing open at 9:03 a.m. for bylaw 2025-03D. Our chief administrative officer, Jocelyn Whaley, will be the secretary for this hearing. And I will now ask for a list of potential speakers for the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to add their name to the list? Do we have anyone online that would like to add their name to the list for the public hearing this morning? We do not have. So now I will hand it over to Ms. Jocelyn Whaley for the purpose of the public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and to all of council. The purpose of the commercial and industrial property tax incentive bylaw is to encourage companies to invest in Drayton Valley. It supports both new business development and the expansion of existing businesses by offering tax relief on new development with the intention of attracting investment, stimulating economic growth, and creating local employment opportunities. I'm willing to take questions after the public hearing.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. So now that we've heard the purpose of the public hearing, I'll just lay a few ground rules for the hearing, and they are as follows: that this is not meant to be a debate between presenters, so all of the comments will be directed to council through myself or through the chairperson. And only one person may speak at a time. Each person wanting to present to council will also have the opportunity, and the order of the presenters will be as followed. So Ms. Jocelyn Whaley will speak on behalf of administration to outline any facts and to present the recommendation of the bylaw for 2025-03D. Do I call that now?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So implications of this bylaw would mean delayed revenue for the municipality in the short term, but growth in the long term of the municipality as a whole. So this supports the alignment with legislation for economic development and diversity, and we will be recommending, after the nonstatutory public hearing, that council give second and third reading to this bylaw.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. I'll now call for comments for members of the public who wish to comment in favor of the bylaw. I'll now call for comment from anyone who is opposed to this bylaw. Nathan, do we have anyone online who would like to comment in favor of the bylaw? Do we have anyone online that would like to comment who is opposed to the bylaw? No comments at all? Okay. Counselor may now ask questions of administration for any clarification only. Does anyone from council have any clarification questions for administration? No? Okay. So counsel, you will consider the information. This will be further along in the agenda for a decision. And if there is no further comment questions from anyone, then I will declare the public hearing closed at 9:06 a.m. And that is it for our nonstatutory public hearing this morning. This morning, we have two wonderful delegations joining us this morning. First up is 6.1, which is the Lemonade Day Prize winners. How exciting. On behalf of the town of Drayton Valley and all of council, I am very proud this morning to share the results of this year's Lemonade Day. This took place on June 14, right here in Drayton Valley. It was a fantastic turnout. Lemonade Day is in a unique way and a hands-on learning experience that gives local youth the opportunity to explore entrepreneurship in a fun, community-focused way. Participants are challenged to develop and operate their own lemonade stands to gain experience in planning, budgeting, marketing, and customer service, of course. This year, we saw six lemonade stands across the town, each led by very creative and dedicated young entrepreneurs. Council was especially impressed with the quality and care shown by each and every participant. This initiative fosters business acumen, and it builds confidence in our next generation of leaders. So we are very thrilled to be congratulating the following standout participants and the winners of the lemonade stand. I'm going to hand it over to Counselor McGee first.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the council chambers. I am making the Best Tasting Lemonade Award. So it was A&amp;A Cool Cousins Lemonade. That's Abby Renaissance and Annabelle Hofart. These young entrepreneurs demonstrated creativity, knowledge of food safety, and the ability to confidently describe their winning recipe. We were also proud to note that this team won Entrepreneur of the Year in 2024 and continue to lead by example. And we can't forget that the Oilers was the predominant theme that was on Main Street, so.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Counselor McGee, for that. And next up is Counselor Evans, who is going to be reading out the next award this morning.
Well, it's my pleasure to be presenting the Best Stand Award, and this goes to Kelsey's Lemonade Stand. Kelsey's Stand stood out for its clear signage, original branding, and strong youth involvement. Her commitment to presentation and community support made her display a favorite with judges and customers alike. Congratulations.
Congratulations. So we'd like to present you with a little certificate now, so we ask that you each come down. First, we'll have up the Best Tasting Lemonade, which is the A&amp;A Cool Cousins Lemonade Stand, and we'll get a little photo with you, and we want to congratulate you.
Want us all in the photo? Okay.
Wow, congratulations. Thank you so much. Good job.
Congratulations, ladies.
Okay, maybe you want to come in front here? We'll squeeze in here. Come on in a little bit more.
There we go.
There, that's perfect.
Perfect, yes.
There we go. Wonderful. Squeeze in. Wonderful. Great job. And hope we'll see you next year. So next up, if you could come up, we have for the Best Stand, which is Kelsey's Lemonade Stand. Wow, that's a nice ribbon.
Go ahead. You can stand. You're one of everybody, too.
Congratulations. Good job. Well, a big congratulations again. It's nice to see such upcoming entrepreneurs in our community. We wish you the best of luck, and we hope that we see you out there next year, and it's nice to see that the Lemonade Day keeps growing year after year. We'd also like to extend our sincere thanks to the Community Futures Capital Region for their support in organizing this program, to all the families, to the volunteers who made it possible. Lemonade Day is a small but powerful way that we can invest in youth empowerment and community engagement. So we look forward to building on this success in the years to come and to watching these young entrepreneurs continue to grow and thrive and maybe become their own little business owners one day. So again, congratulations, and thank you so much. Very good work. And hopefully, we'll see you out all summer around the community selling your lemonade. You get to put your little ribbon up there, too, so everyone in the community knows. That's fantastic, and thank you for coming this morning. Next up, we have 6.2, which is Eagle Point Blue Rapids' 2024 Annual Report. We have Ms. Sandra Bannert here this morning. Good morning and welcome. I was actually going to clap for you because I was so. Oh, I love it. Remember that one for next year, kids.
You guys might find this interesting, but you certainly don't have to stay.
Yes. So Ms. Sandra is going to be presenting to us the Eagle Point Blue Rapids' annual report. So there is some exciting things in here. You're more than welcome to stay and hear what she has to say, or you can leave and get out there and get selling lemonade, too. It's totally up to you. There might be some exciting things in here, though, so. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Well, good morning, councilors. Thank you for allowing me to be part of your agenda today. I appreciate it so much. I just wanted to say congratulations to Jocelyn Whaley in her new position as CEO. That's awesome. Great choice. And I want to say hi to Council Chairwoman, Councilor Evans, the representative on Blue Rapids. And I know some of you councilors may not be running again in the next election, so I say thank you for your service. That's awesome that you gave your time to the town, and I hope you found it a rewarding experience, and we certainly appreciate all your input. So just wanted to give you a little bit of information as to what Parks Council is up to in 2024. One of the things I thought I would feature this morning, we've run a number of events at Parks Council, but last year and the year before, we're kind of at the inaugural years for an event we call a mothball. And I think the mothball has some really incredible potential. It's an event that we hold in July, and it is an event that celebrates all the creatures of the night, so your bats, your moths, your reptiles that come out in the night. And we've had a really good uptake from people from the Alberta associations of all those kinds of entities, so the Alberta leopard, the hill, and the bat people and the reptile people. They all come up to the event. And we also get a good representation of university students who are often doing research, thesis, and programs to come out and see the moths. So as you can imagine, it has to be in the night time that's when the moths come out. But we do the inspections of the moths on these kind of elaborate bed sheets, for lack of a better term, and with some special lighting, and it attracts all sorts of moths that are in our environment. So it's an excellent learning opportunity, and I think it's something that can really gain life support.
Thank you. It's an opportunity that can really gain traction, I think, for the community, as it does attract a lot of provincial people to the event. So it's kind of a fun one. This year is July 17, Thursday, July 17, starting at 6:30 p.m. And if you're interested in going, we ask people to register just so that we know how many people we have for things like walks and tours, that kind of thing, because we do some keynote speaker stuff, and then we go out into the field. So very fun night and great for families as well. The next thing on the list to speak about are recreation clubs. As you know, many of our recreation clubs are always doing trail development and maintenance or facility development and maintenance. The clubs are all listed there. We have the Brazzo ATV Club, the Brazzo Bowbenders Archery Club, Drayton Valley Horse Club, Drayton Valley Paddle Club, the Evergreen Shooting Club, Rotary Club of Drayton Valley, Pembina Nordic Ski Club, and the West Central Riverboat Association. And I have to say, it was awesome. The Brazzo ATV Club and the DV Horse Club were in the parade yesterday, and it's always so fun to see horses in a parade. It was great to see those guys out there yesterday. The clubs put in considerable volunteer hours, 5,378 last year with 1,084 equipment hours. So quite a lot of dedicated people working to make sure that the trails and facilities are in tip-top shape and that they continue to create. So it's a real asset to the community that really doesn't cost the taxpayer, so to speak. It's volunteer hours that they're putting in. The next item to draw your attention to, our nature education program. This is a program that I think most of you are very familiar with. We've offered for years now. We used to call it environmental and outdoor education, and then we thought, let's just shorten that down to nature education. It's a lot easier, more encompassing. This year, we had a very good season. We had 4,839 student experiences. Pictured on there is our fur trade experience. You can see by the elaborate costumes. We partner with the Rocky Mountain Historic Society, and we get a lot of artifacts and costumes, so to speak, from them to make the experience very authentic. So essentially, what happens is we have the students come in. They get a presentation about fur trader. Oh, boy, his name's escaping me now. David Thompson, of course. David Thompson. And so it's a night at Boggy Hall is the situation. And so that's the characters you're seeing. So you're at a trading post. And then the students have that experience, kind of find out about David Thompson's exploration as he's planning it to go to the west coast of B.C. And then the students get a chance to be fur traders as they go out into the forest. And we have these cool little red capes and blue capes, one representing the Hudson's Bay Company, one representing the Northwest Company, and they go and track down furs. And so we have little icons in the trees that they collect, and that's their furs, or they find a cache, and then they take their furs back to the trading post, and they see what they can get for them. So it's kind of a really encompassing experience. The staff put a tremendous amount of thought and effort into giving them kind of an authentic taste of what it would have been like way back when. And this year, we had a couple gentlemen who volunteered, Dave Fowl and Al Bouchard, who played David Thompson. It was pretty fun to have those fellows involved. Anyway, the program continues to exceed our expectation or exceed our capabilities to fulfill all the requests that we have for it. We're hoping to bring on some additional staff this fall that will help support a cross-country skiing component to that program. Next item is our Parks Trail Report. I usually give you guys some statistical information on the trail usage that we have. A number of years ago, the Drayton Valley Community Foundation awarded us some grant money that we purchased trail counters with, and they've been quite valuable to have that data. And I know the town and the county are looking at doing a regional recreation and culture master plan, and I've been asked to supply some of the data that we've collected from the trails. So it's handy information to have, for sure. So I'll probably have, I think, four years of trail data for you relative to that. Community events, we touched on with the mothball, but just to highlight a few other events that we had this past year. We had 12 events. We had, of course, the Fire and Ice, well, that was in 2024, the Fire and Ice Festival. We had Hello Birds, Wednesday Walks, the mothball, the Cabin of Captivity Escape Room, nature journaling, gold panning, pumpkin walk, Christmas wreath making, and I'm forgetting two. But that's the number of events we had. We had 3,100 participants participate. Of course, the pumpkin walk is our major event where we had, I believe, 1,450 this past year. Quite a large festival and seems to gain momentum every year. So we're happy we can still provide those to the community, which is awesome. We did. There was gold in the North Saskatchewan, yes. And we are actually offering the gold panning again this summer, August 23rd and 24th. We're doing an adults class on the 23rd and then more of a family-oriented class on the 24th. So pretty fun. And then he brings a little pay dirt as well, just so people kind of can get the experience. But there was gold found in the North Saskatchewan, which was pretty cool. Yes. This, again, is just to highlight our partnership that we enjoy with the town of Drayton Valley. We love having you on our board as a founding council member on the Parks Council Board. We certainly appreciate the operating sponsorship you give us. We appreciate being your partner with the Fire and Ice Festival, and I enjoy being on the Sustainability Committee with the town. So really enjoy all of the, I guess, experiences as we go back and forth and just collaborate on things that we can bring to the community together. We are heading into this fall a five-year strategic planning session for our board. We're going to be wrapping up this past five-year session kind of at the end of the year, and the five-year planning has been an excellent, I think, method for our work. It totally guides the work of what we do in the Parks Council office. So it's very driven by the Parks Council members, but the work is executed by the Parks Council staff. And even, everything is aligned to that five-year strategic plan. Even our budget, our time sheets are all aligned that we know exactly how much effort and what we are achieving as we go through the strategic planning documents. So we are very much looking forward to doing some consultation. Right now, we have an online consultation that's been open to community, or sorry, recreation club members. We're encouraging those folks to give us some feedback. And then I've also brought hard copies that I would ask you as council to fill out. I would love to have feedback from you, and I'll do the same with Brazzo County. We didn't open it up to a wide, like, community-wide consultation process this time. We're hoping to do that more so in the future. But we do have also an email users list of quite a number of people that we will send the link out to. So those are folks that are kind of familiar with the facilities. They're familiar with our programming, and they can probably provide us more, I guess, educated feedback on what we're doing and what they would like to see us do in the future. So that is on the docket as we go forward. And then, just before I take any questions from you, I just want to thank all of our major sponsors. We have some key sponsors in the community, particularly that fund our education program. So that's Pembina, FREA, the Forest Resource Improvement Association of Alberta, Warehouser, Kiara, and Senovis. So we say thank you to all those folks for their ongoing major contributions to our programming. And that is all I have for you today.
Well, thank you very much for that. Are there any questions for Sandra this morning? Counselor Gomana? How did I forget your name?
Thank you, Mayor Dodds. That's, as always, Sandra, excellent report. Thank you very much for that. Just curious, you know, we had our ski hill closed last season, I think, from starting. Was there any impact to your organization at all with that? Or is it totally separate and there's no?
The ski, yeah, the ski club was its own entity. It did not actually come under the Parks Council umbrella. I did have some conversations and some correspondence with those folks. So as you probably know, they are looking at dispersing the funds from the sale of the ski club through the DV Community Foundation. And one of their kind of major areas of emphasis is youth recreation. So, you know, I think they were very keen to kind of keep us in mind as a benefactor of some of their finances going forward.
Okay.
So I appreciate that from them. That was awesome. But yeah, they were their own standalone entity, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Evans?
Yeah, first of all, I'll thank you, Sandra, for your endless hard work, not just with the parks, but of course, the EPAC and our Sustainability Committee. It's very much appreciated. My question is, what is the Alberta Lepidopterist guilt? What is that thing?
Those are folks that, yeah, butterflies and moths. Those are your specialists.
Okay, I was thinking leprechauns or something.
I know, I had to check the spelling on that. Even Google had a hard time getting the spelling on that, right?
Yeah, never heard of it before. But anyway, that was my only question. Otherwise, thank you. A good presentation, and you folks do so much good work and obviously very popular with how quickly all your programs fill up and the demand for them. So hopefully, we can see you continue with that and expand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor McGee?
Sandra, great to see you. Almost fell off my bike yesterday, by the way. Hey, it was close. Thank goodness.
Two hands, two hands, Tom.
Anyway, just chat a little bit about budget.
Yes.
It's grown since I've been there, which is natural, I think, for it to grow. And if you look at, you've lumped the government grants altogether.
Yes.
And you'll continue to grow. So after a five-year plan, do you get a sense that everybody's on board?
Yes. I think, I actually think having the five-year plan shows an element of legitimacy to the provincial government in that we are thoughtful and well-planned in our execution of what we're doing, and we have our goals clearly articulated, and we have a method to achieving those goals, and we have measures in place to also see if we're reaching the goals that we've set forth. So I think that does build an element of confidence with the province. The community has been continuing to be very strong, particularly our major education sponsors, like I had listed. Pembina Pipeline has been a multi-year partner for years. The Forest Resource Improvement Association through Warehouser has been excellent, and they've been they've been telling us, like, we're in a three-year deal with them right now, but they've been telling us when, when we hit year three, get back to them so that we can keep a continuation of that funding going. So it's, it's, it's really helped. The multi-year deals that we try to strike up with organizations is key, I think, as well, in that it allows us to develop a relationship with those folks so that it's, it's not just us receiving a check, you know, once in a while or once a year or whatever. It's us having a relationship with them and saying, hey, we're, we're, we've got this event coming, let your staff know. So we'll send them informational posters and invitations to these events. We'll invite them to volunteer to do setups for some of our events. Like, we get lots of folks in to help set up for pumpkin walk. So it gets them out of the office, gets them volunteering during the, during the working day so that they can have a bit of a break from their office. And, and so we've got great relationships with those folks, and I, I see the support continuing as we go forward.
Lastly, we had a fire situation happen.
Yes.
I know the bowbenders, are they up and running in a summer spot?
Bowbenders was fine. It was actually the Evergreen Shooting Club that sustained the most damage to their, their range. And so last year, they had reopened, I think, in August, mid-August, I believe. They sustained quite significant infrastructure damage, though. So they are still kind of in a rebuilding phase. But their, their range is so popular that they have the resources to take care of that relatively easily. So, yeah, they're, they're just plunking away at what has to be done out there to get everything back up to stuff.
And has there been any discussions at the board for fire mitigation or things that sort of, because we know that that, that old growth is all along the Saskatchewan River.
Right.
So have we opened any?
That's, that is kind of out of our, our realm, I guess, of governance. That would be more to the province that would actually have the, like, we have the, the recreation clubs that have the leases would have responsibilities in that regard. So say Pembina Nordic, they would, they would have certain responsibilities within the context of their lease around fire mitigation to some degree. But beyond that, it, that's, that's more of a provincial regulatory body.
Okay, good. Thanks very much.
Yeah, no problem.
As Councillor Evans mentioned, your hard work is, is outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Evans, do you have a follow-up question?
Just one more quick question. How's your, how's the educational van coming? I know that's not what you call it. I can't remember.
The Nature Navigator.
The Nature Navigator, yes.
I was, I was very sad. I was really hoping that we were going to have the Nature Navigator ready to unveil for the Canada Day Parade. We're like that close. The, the van has actually, we've been kind of keeping this under wraps, but it's sitting out in our parking lot, so it's kind of hard to, we purchased the van in early March, mid-March, something like that. We're able to purchase at that point. We are just waiting on getting the, the wrap that will go around the van. So we're just waiting on the artwork for that. We want to make sure we get the artwork just right. The interior, interior of the van has been adapted for programming so that the girls will be able to put their resources inside, and they'll be secure and very convenient for them. So that's all good. And, yeah, so we're hoping that it will be on the road probably early August. Definitely in time for the school year, though, for September.
Wonderful. That's exciting.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. You do such a fantastic job. It's always nice to see the events in the community, and we look forward to pumpkin walks and moth nights and Canada Day and everything like that.
Sure.
You guys are doing an amazing job. So how are you doing with government grants? Like, have they changed at all? Are there any additional ones out there, or are you right on track?
So we're, we're very fortunate right now. We receive an operating grant from Alberta Forestry and Parks. Right now, we're in a multi-year deal, so I believe we're in year two of three. And that's, that's been a game changer for us in terms of having that kind of predictable funding. And we worked hard to, to get parks to see the benefit of that. But I think once they have now, I think that's what I would expect going forward, is that we would have funding allocations done over a three, three-year period. So, yeah, that's been awesome. So we, we rely on that. For other government grants, there are more, I guess they would be more specific. So especially, i.e., municipal grants that we get from the town of Drayton Valley and from Brazel County are more usually event-related, so specific to the community. If we have, I'm just trying to think, with, with our operating grant from the province, we don't tend to seek other resources from the province relative, unless it's, unless it's for a specific-driven project. But our operational costs are encompassed with what we get from the province. So that's, that's very handy. And then the rest of, so basically, 55% of our budget, I would say 55% to 57% of our budget is, is more kind of grant-driven, and then the rest of the dollars come in through corporate sponsorship.
Yeah, that's right. It is nice to have that multi-year, right?
Yes, yes.
Rather than a year-to-year, wondering if you're going to get the funding. So, yeah, that's fantastic to hear.
Yes, yes.
So is that coming up for then year, for year, in year two of three? So next year, you'll reapply for that?
Will reapply, yes. Yeah, that's right. So we report yearly on, on the funds so that the government stays in contact with what we're doing, and then it kind of tees us up, I think, better for, as we approach going forward for the next granting cycle.
And then I think I asked you this before. So the tree, tree cleanup or deadfall and things like that on the trails?
Yes.
Who does that, or who partners with you?
So, so just as a reminder, the, the lease, all the, all the trails are actually lease-held. So the Pembina Nordic Ski Club, they hold the, the lease for their facility north of town.
Out there?
But they also have the trail system south, so the, the trail system by the cemetery, that's their lease.
Oh, so that's them to clean that, too?
So that's, that is their responsibility to ensure that that, if there's, if there's hazardous trees or if there's tree cleanup that needs to be done, that, that they do it or their volunteers do it. Sometimes we have tree fairies that come out and just, they magically clean things up.
Yeah.
And it's, it's, I don't know who it is sometimes, but just trail users will just come through and take it upon themselves to, to clean it up.
Okay, wow, wonderful.
Yeah.
And then how is signage? I know you were going to get new signage on some of the trails, and how's that coming along?
Yeah, the signage is, is a work in progress, as, as always, but we, we did make some headway. We've, we've got some at some of our major facilities. We are doing a signage program through our FREA grant that will be done on the Cemetery Trail here very shortly, probably by the late autumn. It should be all installed. And so that, that will be kind of information about the forest, because that obviously is affiliated to Warehouser and to the Forest Resource Improvement Association of Alberta. So they, they wanted some interpretive signage that lends itself to that kind of information.
Yeah, perfect. Well, thank you. Perfect, fantastic. Well, thank you again for your report.
You're very welcome.
Thank you again for another amazing year and the events and everything that you, you all provide. And, yeah, just keep up the great work. It's nice seeing you again.
Thank you, I appreciate you, I appreciate you.
I did do my survey, too.
Oh, excellent. Well, how about, I will check in with Jocelyn and collect those when you guys are finished for the day.
Collect them that way, so everyone, yeah, do up your surveys that Sandra gave us, and then we'll hand them in to Jocelyn.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you so much, you guys.
Thank you. Enjoy the sunshine, take care.
Thank you. You as well.
So that wraps up our delegations this morning. So we'll jump into our decision items. First up is 8.1, which is our Records and Information Management Bylaw 2025-02A for first reading. Ms. Whaley, this is you, I believe.
Yes, and Madam Mayor, thank you. This is very much a housekeeping item. As for the Council 2025 Strategic Priorities, review and update town bylaws and policies as necessary. Number 9916 Records Retention and Disposition Bylaw has been identified as out of date and definitely needing not complying with current legislation. So the existing bylaw will be replaced by the new Records and Information Management Bylaw 2025-02A. And I am willing to take questions if you have any on that, but I would like first reading, please.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. So, yeah, it was a bit of a hard read, the Drayton Valley Municipal Records. I wasn't sure what I was looking for or wasn't looking for, so I didn't know how to quite comment on it, so.
It's, it's very much an administrative direction, but it, we're, we're not currently compliant with legislation, so.
Okay, so when you kind of look at active, inactive, and total retention and things like that, it's got a little code at the bottom which says, current year superseded, permanent. What does all that mean?
So that would be the method of, of retention of the, of the bylaws, and I may actually ask our alleged expert to come down and speak to it, but the old bylaw is very onerous, is a better way to put it.
Okay, yeah, because when I see, I'm like, okay, well, what does it mean if it's active for the current year, but then it's permanent in the inactive year? I wasn't quite sure.
It depends on what the record pertains to. Some records are permanent, some are transitory.
Okay.
So they're all linked back to a separate piece of legislation as to why the retention schedule is what it is.
Okay, and then when there's numbers, what does that mean? Like, here it says four, inactive, number four.
It's the site table, so the site table refers back to the legislation.
Oh, okay. Anybody else have any questions on this? Not a one. Councillor Gomana, do you?
I, I guess it's a simple question. So you created this, you know, with vision lens from the legislature, right? You know, just?
We, we updated the old one. So legislation has changed with concerning electronic documents and stuff like that, and some things are kept for shorter periods of time, and some are now kept for longer periods of time.
And then they, they tell us what to do, and then we just follow that?
Yep.
Okay, excellent. That makes sense.
And we're all very grateful we have somebody so excited about this type of legislation on staff.
And knows all this. So when we look back to this, because our records are, this is from 1994, I believe?
99.
Or 99?
Yeah.
So is this from 1999, or this is the current?
That is the one from 1999. I still have to reformat the new one. You probably wouldn't notice a lot of changes to it, but there's things that have been added, and with the new privacy legislation, which came into effect on June 11th, there are a few additional things I have to add.
Okay, so is anything in here highlighted that was new, or is it just kind of all thrown in here?
It's all just thrown in there.
Okay. Well, I guess, would there be a desire or tip to highlight so we know what's new or not new, or? Come back with second and third reading.
I can, I can put that in the next one, yeah.
Just so I guess we know, because they have from 19, that's 25 years, right?
It's a long time, yeah.
Yeah, it's, is the whole of this, like, yeah, just, just to see. Okay, any other questions? Is there a member of council would like to make a motion for first reading? Councillor Sheriffs, okay?
I'll make a motion that council give the Records and Information Management Bylaw 2025-02A first reading.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? I think the only comment is, is just maybe to highlight what was new, what was old, and everything for second. That would be wonderful. Okay, if there's no further comment, question, debate, then I'll call the motion all in favor. That is carried. Okay, we look forward to that coming for second reading. Next up is 8.2, which is our procedural bylaw 2025-01A for first reading. Again, this is Ms. Whaley this morning.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So again, keeping in stride with the strategic priorities, the procedural bylaw 2022-13A was identified as needing updating in order to match current legislative requirements. So administration has provided an updated version, meeting the new requirements of the Municipal Government Act, and additions have been highlighted in red. So I'm willing to take any questions on that, but we are asking for first reading to the procedural bylaw.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. I don't think, they must be online, highlighted in red. Did they come through on the printed?
It's starting on page 89.
Okay, maybe. Okay, there they are. Okay, does anybody have any questions on the procedural bylaw? Okay, for, after the public hearing, so that would be page 91, there is a whole organizational meeting here. So that is all brand-new, right?
Yes, Madam Mayor, that is a new addition. You previously did not have any reference to organizational meetings in your procedural bylaw.
Okay, perfect. And this is where it belongs, is in the procedural?
Yes, it does, ma'am.
So I guess my question would be is 5.4A, because typically, we have a swearing-in and the oath-taking. Is that not a whole ceremony done prior to all of this?
Yes, Madam Mayor, you, in Drayton Valley, do a ceremony in advance of your organizational meeting. So the wording was actually quite specific, unless council is sworn in at a ceremony prior to the organizational meeting. Is it the end of 5.4A? So where some councils can opt to be sworn in at their organizational meeting, your municipal neighbors do that, Drayton Valley opts to do a ceremony and then have an organizational meeting later. So it's been written for both ways, should either side, should you ever wish to change.
Okay, because, yeah, I was, was questioning if we need to have A and B in there, but it's fine if we?
B becomes irrelevant if council is sworn in at a ceremony prior to the organizational meeting.
Okay. And do we have to have anything mentioned in here for, I guess, the swearing-in and the oath?
The swearing-in and, and the oath is implied that that's when you're sworn in, so.
Okay, so it does.
I'm not sure what your question was, sorry.
Yeah, I don't know either. I guess maybe just saying that we have, the town of Drayton Valley's swearing-in and annual ceremony commences prior to any organizational, because isn't organizational done quite a bit after, like, a month after?
No, it's.
Or is it?
A week later.
Oh, it's a week later?
Last time.
Okay. It's in October. I guess, yeah, because it is at our first.
Yeah.
Any questions on this? I was just, I thought I had a couple more questions. Council shall review the bylaw and approve any amendments. So we kept the one-year term for each committee? So it's no longer the FOIP Act? It's, we just refer to private legislation?
Yeah, it's kind of a rule here, I think.
Okay. Sorry, I'm just trying to look here. Okay, and that's kind of it for the changes, so we're just including in the organizational. So if there's no other questions in here, is there a member of council would like to make a motion for, I believe this is for first reading? Councillor Evans?
I'll make the motion that council give first reading to procedural bylaw 2025-01-8.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? I'll call the motion all in favor. That is carried. And next up is 8.3 on our decision items, which is Commercial and Industrial Property Tax Incentive Bylaw, a second and third reading. We did have a commercial, or we did have a public hearing, non-statutory public hearing earlier, and this is the request for decision now. So Ms. Whaley, this is you again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, yes, as explained earlier, it's a tax incentive bylaw to encourage companies to invest in Drayton Valley. I could repeat myself from earlier if council wishes, or I would be willing to take any questions you may have regarding the bylaw itself.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Does council have any questions this morning? This is for second and third reading. No? Okay. Is there a member of council would like to make a motion to give a second reading to bylaw 2025-03D? Councillor Sheriffs?
I'll make a motion that council give second reading to bylaw 2025-03D, Commercial and Industrial Property Tax Incentive Bylaw.
Thank you for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Councillor McGee?
Just one question before we go to third reading, and I support second. So when I look at this bylaw, what, what, what would I hand out to, to business folks? Would it, the whole bylaw, or would you be able to put a one-page together that says, here's what it means to you? The whole bylaw, or would you be able to put a one-page together that says, here's what it means to you?
Through the chair, too, Counselor McGee, I can absolutely put a summary together that you could take out to businesses to have them either learn about it altogether and understand, or cause them to have enough questions that they come and ask.
Right, considerations, because it's fairly straightforward in my mind, but I'm, we're in it, right? Whereas a business is not, but it does talk to incenting businesses in the town of Drayton Valley. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other comment, question, debate? Then I'll call the motion all in favor. That is carried. Is there a member of council would like to make a motion for a third reading? Counselor Kamana?
Thank you. I would like to make a motion that council gives third reading to bylaw 2025-03-D, Commercial and Industrial Property Tax Incentives Bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion?
Just.
Go ahead, Counselor Kamana?
Okay, thank you. Just along Counselor McGee's comments there, again, you know, just having the information is very good, that we need to get that out there, but also on top of that, we need to kind of create a, I guess, appealing process or marketing process out there to see that, you know, we have this here, right? So how are we going to do that, you know, because I don't know if we can put hard numbers here, because every business is different, and every building is different. But how do we make the community enthusiastic about this?
Through the chair to Counselor Kamana, there'd be multiple methods. One, it's going out through the ambassador program with the Business Support Network to in-town businesses. We will have online, but not on social media, advertising of the bylaw. And beyond that, anytime we reach out, or a business reaches out to us, they will be made informed. So that would be the current proposed method of communication on it.
Okay. I was wondering, have you looked at maybe putting out a mass email campaign or something like that, just to, for businesses like big businesses around Alberta? Just to say that, you know, this is here, you might want to look at our community and, you know, with the package that we are creating, right, the business package that we are creating, just also Alberta Innovates, or Alberta Invests, or any other organization out there as well. Just a thought, you know, just.
Yeah, no, we can definitely look at that. That's not going to be an overnight solution, but it would certainly be something that would be done in the next quarter.
Okay, yeah, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Yeah, I think that with this receiving second and third reading, that we'd want to be creating that elevator pitch in order to get it out and to sell it as well, for sure. So, yeah, if there's no further comment, question, debate, did you have one as well, Counselor Evans?
Maybe, this may be something that we could put on Town Tips that we're sending out. Hard to say, you know, I don't know how many, I'm assuming most businesses get their utility bill online. We can talk about, once you get the summary done, we could consider it. If you want to kick it over to the Sustainability Committee, we can maybe look at getting it out there. Just another avenue to get information out. Thanks.
Absolutely, and through the chair, too, Counselor Evans, and to the rest of council, just a reminder that we don't want to be pushing this to residences, because this is only for commercial and industrial property. So this is not updating your house. So we have to be careful that we don't have cross-contamination. If we need to look at a residential incentive, we can look at that in the future.
Do you think that this would be worth adding to our next economic development meeting, just to have a discussion on what that elevator pitch, or how we get it out to the right target business and commercial?
Absolutely. We will put that on the agenda, so you'll see that at review tomorrow.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that. Okay, if there's no further comment, question, debate, then I'll call the motion. This is for third reading for Commercial and Industrial Property Tax Incentive Bylaw. All in favor? That is carried. And that wraps up our decision items this morning. We will move into our council reports. And Counselor Kamana, you were up first. Oh, you weren't ready.
I was ready this time. Thank you.
You weren't ready?
So on the eighteenth, I had the opportunity to attend Dr. Mike Murphy's retirement party with the rest of the council, thirty-eight years in our community. You know, we are eternally grateful for his service to our community. Nineteenth, candidate information session we had here, good turnout, and, you know, hopefully we'll get most of the attendees putting their name forward to serve the community. On twentieth, National Indigenous Peoples' Month celebrations at CTC, right? And also the Roots of Resilience Charter School inauguration as well. So it was a fantastic event. It was great to see some cultural events happening there as well. On twenty-third, attended the ATB Today's Economy and Markets Forecast, with Counselor McGee was there, I believe. It was great to hear from ATB's financial analysts about the future of Alberta economy, as well as the Canadian economy. What they said is that, you know, we're kind of projecting a little bit of a rough ride, but for Alberta, and particularly for Drayton Valley, I think we are a little bit in a better place than most of other places in the country. So that was great to hear. On twenty-fifth, Kickstand Drayton Valley Grand Opening. Once again, great to have that service in our committee for youth. I'm sure Counselor McGee will talk more about that, but, you know, when we went through the research project with Dr. Anger, in the end, the, I guess, the highest need that they found out was space for youth to hang out, to mix and mingle with. So finally, you know, we are getting that to our community. On the same day, attended the REC Master Plan Meeting, a joint REC Master Plan Meeting with Brazzo County as well. It's a work in progress. I'm sure the committee will see once the two communities put that together. Twenty-sixth, had the opportunity to attend MP Dan Lloyd's barbecue. Again, Counselor McGee was there as well, so it was great to connect with our new MP. We had several conversations. Brazzo County Councilor was there as well. And it brings us to yesterday, Canada Day celebrations. It was a great event, a great parade, once again. So kudos to Lions Club for organizing the parade, very well attended. On top of that, very well attended and organized events at the Omnipex as well. So thank you very much for the town of Drayton Valley staff and the team that organized that as well. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. Counselor Evans?
I'll be repeating a lot of Counselor Kamana's stuff there, but let me see. Dr. Murphy's retirement, also attended. That was a pleasure. On the nineteenth, had a library board meeting in the morning. Yeah, they've been dealing with a lot of kind of nuts and bolts in the library, trying to cover our safety requirements, that kind of stuff, and then the library seems to have a lot of stuff in storage in different places, and they're trying to sort through that and, yeah, get rid of what they're not going to use and bring back what they are. They did some renovations in the library, cleaned up a few things. For anybody who's wandered in there, you can have a look. And then later that evening, I also attended the candidate information meeting. On the twentieth, was at the charity golf tournament meeting, and then later on at the charter school celebration at the CTC, which was interesting and a lot of fun, great turnout. Wow, that place was full. Lots going on, so it was good to see. On the twenty-fifth, was also at the launch of the Kickstand Program, great turnout there. And then later on, the joint recreation meeting, of course, with Brazzo County Council as well. And lastly, Canada Day, and I'll second Counselor Kamana's compliments to all the volunteers and staff that were involved. Enjoyed slinging some cake there with Counselor Kamana. And, yeah, it was a great day. Enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor McGee?
All right, same thing, repeating, but here we go. Dr. Murphy was a long-term resident of our community, and if you were there, and you were to hear the, sort of the remarks that were made, is that that wasn't the first place that Anne wanted to live, but they've raised two children, two Canadian children, and brought two Irish children with them. And so we'll see how long Dr. Murphy lasts in retirement. Kickstand barbecue, an outstanding event, other than the wind, but we got through that. The drummers were outstanding. Darcy and Bernadette were from the Ochis Band. They brought the drummers in, and it was really good. And part of what became good about that was the members of the Opportunity Homes that came and were enjoying the drumming, and had a number of questions for Bernadette around, say for instance, braiding your hair, what does it mean? And do women braid differently than men? And yes, they do, and it has great meaning, right? All of those things, which I think is, I saw it as another opportunity for teaching at the Opportunity Homes. And so, you know, I talked to Dana a little bit about it, so we'll see. But Joanna Shaw and her team are going to do some great work. And as I mentioned, the new vocabulary, there is a great need, one that we may not know, but it's here. And they're there to do those things that we should be doing. Joint council, again, an interesting meeting. It was recreation. I think we came out of that with some good conversation at least. So we'll continue to build on that relationship through recreation. Dane Lloyd, again, the, our MP, was trying to manage his days through Canada Day, and so the barbecue was on. And he, you know, there was a good turnout for that. Interestingly enough, the two times that they were hot dogs and hamburgers, but T-Bones was managing that event, and I thought, I did have a chat with him, and he's kind of curious about running for council, so you may see him on the docket, so. Parade was outstanding, and I got to ride, which was important, because I could hardly get on the stand, up onto the thing, but that got good help. Getting down was even tougher. I just said, oh my God. Anyway, I'm getting older. The other thing I wanted to mention, too, though, was the ATB session, great turnout. I don't know how they managed to do that, but the Royal Bank will put one on, and it's hit and miss. But the ATB did a great job, and the two speakers, Mark Parsons, you know, he talked about the markets, and Robert Armstrong talked about diversification, so Canada is moving into European markets instead of looking just at the US. And so the other thing that I specifically took away was that it's Alberta-based and Alberta-focused. So that's pretty cool. Whereas the larger banks will be in national scope, and this was strictly Alberta-based. I thought it was great. Anyway, that's my story today.
Thank you very much for that. Counselor Clark is away. He is on a holiday, and maybe we'll give a shout-out to his granny-in-law, I believe, is celebrating a hundredth birthday in Ireland. So happy birthday to her from afar. Next up, Deputy Mayor Sheriffs, your report, please.
So a lot would be repeated of what other councillors said, the candidate information session. The ATB economy, I agree with Counselor McGee, the turnout, there was a couple hundred people, at least, at that event. One thing is, in my calendar, I only had a book for one hour, as opposed to some people had three hours. So I made different plans, and I had to leave early, but yes, it did look very, very interesting. On June 24th, I attended the HW Pickup Awards with Mayor Dodds. And amazing to see so many wonderful young kids achieving such great things in life at a young age. On 25th, we had the Kicks and Launch, and then attended a quick meeting with our MLA and Minister Wilson, with Lola and some people from the Opportunity Home, and I think that was a very, very successful meeting, I would say. And Canada Day celebrations yesterday. That's all.
Perfect. Thank you for that. For myself, yes, we had the candidate information session. It was nice to see that we did have some people turn out for that. I was hoping that it wouldn't be an empty gallery, so it was nice to see that. We have an election coming up, so hopefully we'll see some more people's names in the community on the ballot, and we'll have a big, long lineup of people. So I believe we do have a video that.
Yes, Mayor Dodds, we do have it up on the YouTube channel.
Okay, perfect, on the YouTube channel. And if you need any more information, you can come into the office and grab your nomination package here. All the information is in there. You can always reach out to administration or a councillor if you're curious about questions or what it takes, and how to run for council as well. To get information, that's probably the best way, is to hear it from a past councillor of what their role is and what their responsibilities are. The following Friday, we welcomed the Charter School to the CTC. So that was exciting to see all the people turn out for that, and we look forward to registration kickoff in the fall. It looks like there's already quite a few students that are signed up for that, so it's nice to see that they did get the provincial approval for that chartered school, so that will be underway. As I'd mentioned, in the fall, there was the street party on the Friday, so thank you to everyone that made that a successful party again. That's a great way to kick off the summer, and to all the volunteers, and to the fifty-fifty winners, and everyone that came out. The bands were absolutely fantastic, lots of dancing and fun. So thanks for another successful street party, and I believe there's another one in August that will be outside. So let's pray for sunny weather for the second one. I attended, excuse me, Alberta Health Services Meeting, Police Funding Model Review, Alberta Council. Deputy Mayor, Sheriffs, and myself attended HW Pickup Awards as we wind down. That was their ceremony. It's the first that they've had in, I think they said, seven years. They'd kind of, yeah, had suspended it for a while, so this was a great way to pick it up. It was a fantastic turnout, and congratulations to all the young junior high students in their exceptional studies, whether it's academics, sports, or, you know, just school improvement or being a wonderful friend. Congratulations. Keep up the great work. We went to Ms. Jenny Winter. She celebrated twenty-five years at Winter's Pharmacy. So she was very excited for us to come and visit her and to put that banner up. July 1st was actually the twenty-five years. That was yesterday on Canada Day. She was ecstatic to have received that plaque, and was so proud to have her picture taken and put on Facebook. So a big congratulations to twenty-five years to her. We have some other businesses in the community that will be going out and celebrating as well, some big anniversaries coming up this summer. So it's nice to see. We have a lot of businesses that are being successful in the community, and they've been around for so many years. So thank you for taking care of our community and continuing. We wish you many, many more years of great success. Kickstand was a fantastic turnout, very excited to see that building being utilized and to have this opportunity for our youth in the community. So we look forward to partnering with them, helping if they need anything from us, and just for the services that they'll provide. I did attend the Joint Council Recreation Meeting as well. This was a kickoff for that recreational master plan and what that will look like over the coming year. I attended the Summer Leaders Caucus in Devon. I would say that the two big highlights for that were, again, talking about how municipalities haven't been adjusted for inflation. It seems like the province has, but we're all still trying to get infrastructure funding and all sorts of funding, and just talking ways about, you know, how, rather than raising taxes, can we keep afloat as municipalities? So that's always on everyone's mind, as well as policing. There's a lot of policing. I attended a policing, what was it called? The Policing Funding Model Review. And I know that everyone's talking about what's going to be happening by 2032. Are we going to no longer have RCMP? What does that funding look like? There's so many questions, and everybody doesn't know, so I guess the coming years will tell us what we have to do and where we'll be, and I believe that the RCMP will still be there, so I don't think they're going anywhere. It just might get shifted a little bit, so we'll see what that looks like. I want to say congratulations to Outreach grads. That wraps up our high school graduating classes in the town of Drayton Valley, so congratulations to all of our graduating classes. We hope you have a fantastic summer, great job on your achievements, and we welcome you out into the workforce now, so we're looking forward to seeing you out in the community and heading to university and college. I also attended the Pinoka Stampede with the mid-sized mayors. That is always such a big event. It's amazing, I didn't realize that the premier goes, all the ministers go, mayors from everywhere, they consider that the mini Calgary Stampede, so it was actually really nice to be able to, you know, have an opportunity to sit kind of in a relaxed setting and talk to some of the ministers and everybody. Out of that, we'll be having a meeting coming up with Midsize Mayor's Towns, with Minister Williams at the ledge. That is, he is in the new role now as municipal affairs, so as a working committee for Midsize Mayor's Towns, we work with the premier in municipal affairs, so we're looking forward to that meeting coming up in the next couple of weeks to talk again about infrastructure funding, and hopefully he'll continue that working group with us as well. And again, thank you to everyone who made Canada Day possible yesterday. It was a fantastic parade, fantastic turnout. Everyone worked hard, and congratulations, there was some contest to the winners and everything, thanks to our planning committee, and happy Canada Day, everyone. That wraps up my report, and all of council reports. Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion to accept these as information? Councillor Gamanna, thank you very much. All in favor? That is carried. And is there a member of council that would like to move us into closed under section 24? Councillor Sheriff, thank you very much for that. We'll move into closed session at 10:13 AM. All in favor? That is carried. So we are just moved out of closed, and we will reconvene our meeting. We have just wrapped up our council reports, and we are just taking a little bit of a moment here. We wanted to invite both Daven and Eric to say congratulations. They were the winners of the Oilers Day. They got to go and meet Wayne Gretzky and go to the Edmonton Oilers game playoffs, so we just want to congratulate them, welcome them to the council chambers, and get a little picture with them.
They're celebrities.
They're celebrities, yes. Yes, yes, congratulations. Congratulations, so exciting. Will you get a picture with you? Okay, that'd be great.
Come on this way. We'll get it to the bakery, one more time.
One more time, I'm going to come in here to squeeze in here. Let's come on in here.
Send this to your mom. The two brothers, right here.
Perfect. How exciting. So how exciting. What was Wayne Gretzky like?
Oh, he went so nice.
Oh, he was so nice? Wow, I seen the video on Facebook, I couldn't believe it, I didn't think it was real.
Yeah, yeah.
So you were in the dollar store in Edmonton when you got the great news?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah?
And then they handed a cheque, but, story goes, they put another thousand bucks into the account.
Oh, that's so nice. Wow, did you spend all the money?
No, no.
Well, that's fantastic, you got to go to an Oilers game. Who won that game? Did the Oilers win that game? No, they didn't. Was there lots of cheering, though?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And did you wear your Oilers? Yeah, you did, yeah. Did you beat any other hockey players?
No, we met David Fisher.
Oh. Oh, you met LaRocque? Okay, LaRocque came to Drake a couple of years ago and skated here.
We had Todd LaRocque and Jason Smith.
Okay. Wow, wow. Lots of them.
Yeah.
And did you get good seats?
Oh, yeah.
You were treated like royalty, right?
Yeah.
Oh, how exciting. Well, we just wanted to say congratulations, and that's so fantastic. You guys are superstars.
Well, we're trying to chase the video, because there's a video, and then the king, local king of the great, they go to their house. So someone we can't see, they want to get the video, get that one.
Of the global?
Of the global winner game. Chase through the other, one guy who has...
Okay.
You want to be global, boy, in the future?
Yeah.
And we want to combine them, right?
Oh, yeah.
Somebody's working on that.
Okay, wow, fantastic.
Okay, you guys, thanks a lot.
Thanks a lot, thanks for coming, really exciting. Wow.
I'll send you the picture.
Keep on cheering on those Oilers for us, right?
Yeah.
We've got to bring that cup back.
Next year, right? How exciting, wow. Were you in Edmonton with them when they received the news? No? Good, how was you? Oh, did you know about it? Wait, it's a surprise, wow. Wow. Oh, wow, did you, yeah. Come on out, nice, nice to be here, thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Got it? Who is your favorite Edmonton Oilers player? Both of you.
They're here. David.
David and Huguen Hawke, wow. Wow, we'll keep cheering them on, thank you for your Oilers spirit, and congratulations again.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
You're welcome, you guys.
Enjoy the sunshine. They love the Oilers. So that was nice, we got a little picture with those two gentlemen and congratulated them on their special day with the Oilers and everyone they got to meet. That's really nice to see when something like that happens to residents in our community. So we've moved out of closed. We have some roundtable discussions, 12.2. Who would like to go first?
Any motions coming out of closed?
Nope, we do not have any motions coming out of closed. Yep. So I can maybe just dive a couple of questions. So yesterday was Canada Day, it was absolutely fantastic, the parade was wonderful. I think when we're at the front of the parade, we don't get to really see much of the parade because we're kind of gone, but I heard that lots of positive comments, that people said it was absolutely wonderful, like one of the best parades, fantastic. I've seen some videos, which was great. As we were driving back later in the afternoon, I'd seen a lot of horse poop everywhere, so just wondering, I don't know if that's like part of the parade route that they're supposed to be picking up, but I just wonder if years going forward, if it's, I guess in the winter we can't, but in the summer, if we could have the street sweeper clean right after the parade? We could even throw some ribbons on it or something just to clean up the streets? I know they're still pretty caked this morning. That would be, yeah, this morning, right? If they're our last kind of, that comes at the parade?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we could send the street sweeper, we will send the street sweeper around now, but we may also suggest that next year, if the Lions Club is organizing and there are going to be horses in the parade, that a requirement of having horses means you have picker-uppers following horses.
Yeah, because I noticed the Frankmatic parking lot is full, too, and that's where the staging area was, right?
So, yeah. So in other municipalities, they require.
They require.
So.
And I know that the Christmas parade, the chamber does that, so that was one of the requests, is that somebody has to follow behind, so I just assumed, but, yeah. Just that. And then my next question was our Freya grant with Warehouser for our trail expansion. Have we started that, and where are we at with that?
Madam Mayor, we have, we're working with them on the expansion of the trail. They have been doing the planning and are looking at wayfinding signage.
Oh, okay, so have we started the mulching, or do we know?
I don't believe we have had a lot of progress on that yet. We were waiting for drying as the last update I had, so.
Okay, so that's still happening and everything like that. Okay, anybody else? Go ahead, councillor Gamanna.
You know, we both attended MP Lloyd's barbecue there, and I was wondering, we should send him my invitation to meet with the council at some point.
Yes, he did, I haven't, he's on my list to call today. He did message me, too, to have that meeting, so do we want to pick a couple of dates, or do you want me to get some dates from him first? Better to go that way. Who's July? Okay, I'll call him, he's on my list. I'll call today, and then I'll send out a couple of dates and see when he, yeah. And he was invited to our golf, was he invited to our golf?
Yes, an invitation was sent to him for golf.
Okay, perfect, wonderful.
At the same time, I was thinking about our MLA as well. We haven't met with him for quite some time.
Yeah, and now that he's been the minister, yeah, maybe we could request?
Yeah, just, you know, before we wrap up, just, I don't know, meeting maybe with him?
Yeah, and on that note, interesting, I had a discussion with Dane about space, and there was a discussion here about having space here in the town office. Then there was a discussion over at the MLA's office to put him in there, but it's too tight, so he'd much prefer to be here, so.
Excellent. We've reached out to let him know, we were waiting for feedback from his administration.
Oh, perfect, yeah. It'd be nice to have him right here in the office.
Yes.
Okay.
And, sorry, for clarification, did you want the MLA invited to a council meeting?
We could invite him to a council meeting, but maybe invite him like at 11:30 or something?
And have a lunch after?
Have a lunch after, yeah, yeah, yeah. And I mean, we can even extend the invitation to Dane if you let me know that date as well. I just want to return his call and then say.
I think you'll probably get faster response on dates from our MP.
Yeah, yeah. And then we'll, I'll set that up with him. And then, oh, yeah, after, okay. I think that's all I have for roundtable discussions. What do we all have coming up here as we head into July? I thought it was going to slow down, but it is not slowing down. Going to have a peek here. So we do have a governance and priorities coming up next week. I'll let everyone know when I'm meeting with Minister Williams, once that's finalized, the date. I'm thinking it's probably July 16th with Midsize Mayor's Towns. And we have our charity golf happening on the 18th. Tomorrow, we do have a mayor's gala meeting, Monica and I, so we're going to be finalizing the agenda and all of councils, we're going to put your guys' name in, and we're going to hand you your little slot, so everyone's well-prepared for September this year, and you know what category you'll be speaking to. And we have, I don't know when the closing date for nominations are, do we know? We still have them open for the mayor's gala?
It was the 27th, I haven't gotten it.
Okay, I think we talked about extending just because it's been so busy, so maybe once Jen sends that out again, one plug, if we can all share it. I think we've got quite a bit of nominees again, but if we can all kind of share it one last time, get it out, so then just to finalize to the community. Anybody else have anything else? No? Okay, so next up is information items. We have several information items this morning. 11.1 is Minister Todd Owen's response letter. 11.2 is unsuccessful grant letter. 11.3, a letter from concerned resident. 11.4 is a letter to Mayor Dodds, Minister Wilson. 11.5 is correspondence from Minister of Tourism and Sport. 11.6 is Brazos Senior's Foundation meeting minutes for the 16th, 2025 meeting. Is there a member of council that would like to accept these information items as information? Councillor Gamanna, thank you very much for that, all in favor? And is there any other motions coming out of the information items that a council would like to make in regards to the letters? Councillor McGee?
I would make a motion that we, given some of the information that's in one of the letters from concerned citizen, that we, that we look at organizing a mayor's council on advisory council on the homeless situation, and I think if we keep it narrow, it doesn't burden into something other than what it's supposed to do, right? And if it's, if it becomes what it is, then at least you can address it after, as it grows or not grows. But I would make a motion that we put a mayor's council together, advisory council.
Thank you very much for that, councillor McGee. Any comment, question, debate on the motion?
My only comment would be that I think that is a good idea. I think if we could get, you know, the right members on the board that maybe have information in regards to working or dealing with the homeless in the community law, whether it's the RCMP or Alberta Health Services, things like that, as well as members at large, that gives the community an opportunity to give their ideas and concerns and how they're going to assist in dealing with this issue, because it is a community issue, it's not just a town or a council issue, so it's a good idea. What would that look like, Ms Whaley, for, would we have a terms of reference come for this, or what are your ideas? Madam Mayor, to all of council, I can bring a terms of reference for this to your governance and priorities meeting next Wednesday for review, if you'd like.
Perfect, thank you very much for that. So if there's no further comment, question, debate, then I'll call the motion, all in favor. That is carried, and we will adjourn our meeting at 11:13 AM.